Uh so yeah, we're back to our CPS. This is actually the the third one I did. The last time I did CPS sessions. I had covid, so that was a little bit rough, but now I don't have covid and so I probably can do it a little bit better. So any questions before we get going really quickly? I'm gonna have a sip of my tea and then yeah, any questions?
Are you recording?
I am recording and can can you say something again?
Is your voice in there?
My voice and your voice are in there. Good, we're good.
Okay, great.
And did I make any typos on the thing on the bottom? Uh as far as I can tell, I did not. As long as allocations.
Looks good.
Spelled correctly. Ah, not bad. That's what I tried to do. Okay. Um. So yeah, so let's start today with uh functions with multiple outputs. So like the last thing we looked at, you know, we've we've talked about all the kind of like if statements and um just like how to use a function and stuff like that. So we're gonna use those things like very quickly and like I'm not gonna explain uh all the if statements and the while loops exactly the um syntax and stuff like that for it because we've gone through that already. I'm gonna assume people know how to do that. And so yeah, so we're gonna start with functions with multiple outputs. Multiple outputs. So we know how to do function with multiple inputs. I mean, that's not too difficult to figure out. So here I'm gonna open a new C file. And we're gonna go here and I'm just gonna get rid of this. This thing. So if I define some function like um it'll be, I'll just say int uh sum and it'll take in sum. And it will take in two um it'll take a, I guess I'll take an int num one and then int it needs to be commas, yeah, int num two. Okay. And let's say. Okay, let's just like make this make this first. Let's just make this first. I'm you know, I'm sure you people know how to do this. So let's just say I'm gonna say uh uh input into input. Input. One. Int input two. And uh I'm gonna say we're gonna call this function. I'm gonna say here, I'm gonna say return num one plus num two. I don't think, yeah, there you go. And then I'm just gonna call the function. I'm gonna say uh int result. And I'm gonna say result equals sum. Input one. Input two, and I'm just gonna give them values here. We'll give the values here. So this is just a normal function. I'm not doing anything new here, right? Two and three. And then if I print the result. The sum is percent D result. So let's see what happens if I run this. Compile. I'll say uh study hall. And I'll say functions. So if I build this, uh I did something wrong. Didn't put a semicolon. And that's it. So if I run this, I should get five because two plus three is five. Okay. Now, what if I also want the function? So I understand that here, like what if I want the function to return to me if the sum is greater than uh greater than five? Let's just say five because this example was five. So if the sum is greater than or equal to five. I wanna get that from the function, not just from not from like, cuz I would here I could just say if the result is da 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 da. But let's say I wanna I wanna do it from the function. So I wanna have a multiple output function. Well, then I'm gonna have to have a new integer, right? Or a new some variable that remembers if the result of this function inside the function is greater than or equal to five. Okay, so I'm gonna say uh value or um okay, value, sure. And so I want this function to assign value to be something, right? Um so I'm gonna have, what I'm gonna have to do is I'm gonna have to put in so what we're trying to do is is a function with multiple outputs. So we wanna have another output here, which is if the sum is greater than five. Now, I can't just return this other variable because I already have one return statement here. So I'm gonna have to use a pointer. That's gonna point to this variable. Gonna point to this variable. So what I'm gonna have to do. I realize I should have thought of this beforehand, but uh I'm gonna have to define a pointer, so an integer pointer. I'll call it pointer. Right? And pointer is going to point to value. Or the address of value. Okay, so this is setting up this thing. It's pointing to the address of value. Now I'm gonna put in to the function. I'm gonna put in pointer. And I have to account for that up here. So I have to get an int pointer and I'm gonna call that um whatever I'll call it. I call it value. I wanna have names that are ma- making sense, like value two, I guess. That doesn't really make sense, but it's it's what's keeping track. Yeah, okay, this will be value one. This is in the main function. This is in the in the actual function function. So now I have to, first of all, say int answer. Right? Equals, well, you just say int answer. And answer equals num one plus num two. And so of course I'm return, I'm still returning answer here. But I also want to assign, right? If if answer is greater than or equal to five, then I wanna do something else. Well, I guess I still will have an else. So if it's greater than equal to five, I want um I want pointer, sorry, gotta think about this for a second. If I just say val- if I were to just say value two equals. Um so I wanna have a one for true and zero for false, right? So one means that the answer is greater than five. So I wanna assign it to one. And if I were to just say value two, now this probably won't work. And we'll see why in a second. So value two is equal to zero. So what I was essentially saying is that I'm gonna change, I'm gonna have to put a star. Let's just try to run it. It probably won't work. I missed a semicolon again. And yeah, okay. So the problem that it's giving us here is what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to say if the answer is greater than five, assign this pointer, whatever the pointer is. Which is which was pointer here, which is which is the value we're looking for. I know I'm using three variables for one thing, but yeah. Um and assign it to one if it is greater than five. If not, assign it to zero. Because then in the main function, we have this result, right? We have this pointer variable and we'll be able to use the result from here. But the assignment from in star, uh sorry, warning, assignment to in star from int makes pointer from integer without cast. So value two is a pointer and I'm assigning it to this address of one, which doesn't really make sense. I think it's just a star. I'm pretty sure I just have to put a star there. Yes, there we go. So now what value two is pointing to is assigned to one. What value two is pointing to is assigned to zero. So then down here, I can say printf. Um, well, no, you know, I'll put an if statement, I guess. Or you know what? I'll do a switch just so we can practice using switches too. So if I get that value one case zero, then my result is printf. Your result is less than five. Case one. Print F. Your result is greater than five, six, five, yes. And I have to put a breaks too. Forgot the breaks. Break. And break. So now if I run this and do this, so oh, I should, or equal to, greater than or equal to. Equal to, and I'll just put a new line so you can see, there we go. So, there we go. So what's happening? Let's try to run through this. It's working. We did everything right. It's not no problem here. Zoom out so you can see the whole code in one go here. Let's try different numbers quickly. Let's see if it works for all the numbers that we, so two and three make five, but what about two and two? So what we should get from here, yeah, is that my sum is four and your result is less than four. Right? Sorry, less than five. It is four. It's less than five. Okay, and then let's try something much bigger. Let's try like, you know, twelve. Alright, so the sum is twelve. Your result is greater than or equal to uh five, right? It's greater than five. Okay, so it's working. So what we did is we turned this function, this function, which you know, all, you know, pretty much by definition of a function, you can only have one output. Uh well, you can only have one ordinary output. That's true. But essentially what we're doing, and I think a good graphic to understand this is in my notes here, and I think it's it's sort of kind of helps to figure out what we're doing. Is is this right here? So the basic input is our, uh the, well, we have two basic inputs in num one and num two. Those are our two basic inputs. And we have a basic output as well. Just answer, just num one plus num two. But our pointer input and outputs, well, I have one of them. It's called, it's it's what, it's kind of have three different names. So in our main file, it's called value one. Should give a better name to it. I just couldn't think of the name bound. Should I call it bound? I don't know. Um. But the idea is, is that in the main file, in the main program here, we have a variable called value one that's just keeping track of is the result of our function call, is the result of our function call um greater than five or greater than equal to five or less than five? So I have to send that as a pointer into the function because I want the function to output it as a pointer. I'm assigning here. So essentially what's happening is that no matter where on the computer, right? The memory address has an address. It's the same address to the main function and it's the same address to the to the to the sum function up here. Is there a question?
You have a question?
Yeah.
So like I get what you're doing, but like I never really understood the concept of pointers. Like I know they point towards a variable, but like I can't just overall be confused about like, why, why would you use a pointer? Why not just use a regular variable? Explain that?
So use like another variable? Why not just use a regular variable?
Why not just uh do or declare input one, input two, add them? And then just say if answer is bigger than five, print answer is bigger than five. Right? Like why would you need this more like exponent or?
In the function?
Yeah, in the function, why not just?
Well, yeah, so this example is not exactly net, like you don't have to do it how I did it. There's like, the the way I'm doing is just to show um to using pointers as another output of a function. Yeah, for sure. You could you could do this up here in the function. You could do it after the function cuz you have the result. You could do it in a lot of different ways, but this is just the example that.
Like what's the whole part of the pointer? Like what pointers are actually used for? They never really got a con- like concept behind them.
The reason is is because if I declare a variable in the main function like value one, the function has no idea what value one is. The function itself has no idea what value one is. But if I send the address, so look, PTR is a pointer. It holds the address of value one. So the address is like where in the memory this data is stored. If I send that address into the function, now the function has a way to edit that variable. Does that make sense? Now, now it has a way to edit that variable.
So basically multiple like kind of returns in some sense, correct?
Yeah, it is. It is. It's just that it it's like we have a standard return, which is the answer, which is num one plus num two. And then the function, we've also given the function away to edit the value of the variable value one.
Hmm, why wouldn't?
By sending the address, yeah.
Like I'm, I never tried this before, but let's say return answer and then comma or like comma something else. Why don't you do that? Or that's not?
Return answer and then you wanna say return something like return something else after that or?
The parentheses just put like comma ever and then just put like some, can't you put the two parameters?
You mean like return answer and return value like this?
Yeah.
That wouldn't work. That wouldn't work.
That or that's not a thing.
That's not a thing. That would, that wouldn't work. Because which one would it assign to this? So it's like I'm I'm doing the function call here. I'm saying result is equal to this. But what would result then be equal to? Would it be equal to answer or would it be equal to value one? It it wouldn't be equal to either. It just wouldn't go. But the reason it doesn't work is cuz the program would get confused there.
So return can only have like one thing inside?
Yes, it can only have one argument.
So then to bypass that, then use a pointer?
Mm-hmm.
And then you just, and then you just basically, and you just like create a pointer and then the pointer is basically that variable. So then you send that variable in the one that's like the pointer kind of, and then you work with.
You you send the address of the variable you wanna, you want the function to be able to edit. You send the address of that variable into the function and then the function can do it.
Okay. I'm just trying to wrap it.
What'd you say?
It sounds like I'm like, I I I think I get it. Just like value one is a pointer and you send the pointer in the main function. So if you added value two with the pointer, then you added the other things too.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, like I said, there are so many pointers. I can only point towards things, but like I didn't know what's why not just make a regular variable for it.
But do you understand now a little bit more?
Yeah, no, I think I get it. I think I get it. Yeah, thank you.
No problem. So I'm gonna comment the code quickly just so people can, maybe if you're confused with one part. So value one stores the information uh on uh the stores if uh result of the function is greater than or equal to five. Okay, here we're declaring a pointer that will point to the address. I don't know how to spell address. Is that how to spell it? Of value, value one. Right? So we need a pointer. The reason we do that is because we're gonna send the uh standard inputs and the pointer inputs into the function. So that's what we're doing here. And that's that's all the the funny stuff that's happening really. Because over here, we're just printing the result. The result. Ah, result, and just evaluating value one. Evaluating value one. So we're just looking at if value one has a zero, then means that our result was less than five. And if our value one has a one, that means our result was greater than or equal to five. Now, how do we edit value one? That's what's happening in the function here. Right? So here we're gonna just say getting question?
Instead of making, like, did you have to make the PTR a pointer?
Like I had to put a star here. Yeah, I had to put a star.
Cuz like in the final project, I did a thing where instead of making PTR a pointer. Since like in the sum function, there's a pointer for value two. I referenced the function. I just put the and sign in front of like.
Oh, I see. So you you did, you did um ampersand value one?
Um ampersand like just whatever I wanted, the value that's coming from.
Yeah, so in this case it would be value one, right? In this case it'd be value.
Yeah.
That's the thing we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that would work as well. Yeah, that would work as well. Um so instead of, instead of switching, that that's that's, you know, eliminates two lines of code here. So that's pretty good. Um so yeah, so yeah.
I didn't get the int star PTR thing.
Well, essentially all that's happening here is we're saying we have a different variable that's gonna hold the address. But you know what? You're right. There's no need for that. I can just send the address, the exact address in, and that would work just as well. So.
Um.
Yeah.
So sorry, I don't wanna uh interrupt, but in the, so I did the exact same thing cuz that's how they asked us to do it. But if you go into the function itself, you have to do an ampersand and then like the star value two. You have to do a double pointer there for some reason. It doesn't work. Yes, it it, no, not in there, not in there, but uh in the if statement itself. So yeah, i- inside the function. It has to um, I I was trying to run it. No, in in the function itself, in the if statement, yeah, right there. You put an ampersand before the um thing.
Yeah, like like here.
Yep, for both of them.
The address of
Yes.
what value two is pointing to?
Yes, that, I don't know why it it goes double like that, but if you're using it this way, that's how you do it. Otherwise, um your way is perfect. It's the exact same thing either way.
Yeah, let's try, okay, I didn't like it.
So.
Compilation failed. Well, let me try without it quickly. Okay, likes it without it. Let's see if it works though.
I I was using, I was using a different compiler. Maybe that's why.
Maybe that's possibly, that could possibly be. Yeah, here it worked. Here it worked just the same.
Okay. Yeah. I wasn't using genie, so that probably was.
Yeah.
I don't think you're referencing and dereferencing, I don't know if that is what we wanna do. Cuz the the little dot, I don't know what it's called, pound symbol or the star symbol is a dereference. And the ampersand is a reference. So like you end up with with the value, with just a with an address, I guess.
And then you're recording, by the way, correct?
I am recording. Yes, thank you. Thank you for checking cuz I don't, I wanna not miss that. Yeah, I know, I am recording and.
Do you have your voices on and everything?
Everybody's voices are in. Thank you. Yes, everybody's voices are in. Very good. Um, okay, so this is the idea. This is a a better way. I I I I guess although yeah, this works. This works. It works for sure. I would, I guess, do it like this just because it's more like structured, at least at least for me. I can see like well, this is a variable that holds the address, although there is just it's just more variables that are unnecessary. So if this makes more sense to you, we're just gonna send the exact address. Don't forget about the pointer. We're just sending the exact address into the function of the variable that we wanna change. And now the function is able to change what's stored at that address. And yeah. And so well, that's the idea for um functions with multiple outputs. So we send, we have to send for each extra output we want, we have to send a new input and it's the address of the variable we wanted the function to be able to change. And again, I think a good understanding is yeah. Okay, any questions about functions with multiple outputs? Should I do more examples?
Can you do more examples?
Yeah, you want to see another example? Okay, let's see if I can find one that's actually semi-interesting. See, um, there was a link where there's just like sample problems. But I don't recall. And now D two L isn't loading. Oh, now it's loading. Okay. If anybody has like a resource where there's sample problems, that probably would be good to send if you do. Otherwise, I'll find it. I just need to look at here. I'm gonna go to like the the program that we use. That I mean the the uh resource that the course gives us. Functions, no, they don't give any examples. Oh, maybe they do. No, they don't. Okay, so I'll just look at um example, well. Let me try to find it. Give me one second. I'm gonna find some example, example.
I sent an example in um discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Along with the the function declaration and along with the main program as well.
Uh I see. Okay, so yes, let's give this a try. Thank you. Um so what is the goal of it? It's the goal is to, oh yeah, you enter a double. It gives you the sign, the whole part and the fraction part. Okay, makes sense. Okay, makes sense, yeah. Okay, so our goal for this program. I'm gonna just write this here. And I'll actually, I'll comment it on the top. So the goal for this program is to write write a function that uh takes in a double and returns um the sign, the whole part and the uh fraction part or the decimal. Part. Okay, so that's our goal. So let's start with this. So first of all, uh the user will input something, so I'm gonna printf. Uh it's gonna, it's gonna say please input a double. Double, if I could spell that, that'd be nice. Uh new line. And we're gonna scan F. And it's going to be a double, so I have to say LF. And I want to assign that to input. I know I have to declare uh double input here. Okay, so now we have an input from the user. So I need to I need to send this, I need to call the function here, right? I need to call the function. So first of all, I'm gonna have three results. I have three pieces of information I need to give back to the user. The first one is the sign. So um how will we do that? How are they doing it here? The sign is percent C, new line, S. So percent C is a character and plus and minus counts as a character? Okay, I guess plus and minus counts. Yeah, that makes sense. Never mind. Um, okay, so we're gonna have a character called sign. We're gonna have a integer called um the whole part or the uh I guess it's called the whole part. So the whole part. And then we're gonna have a double called the fraction. And at the end, I wanna print all these things. I wanna say that um the sign of the number is percent C sign uh printf. The uh whole part of the number is percent D. Or is that percent D? Never mind. And it's going to be the whole variable. I'll put a new line quickly here and here. And then finally, we just wanna say that the um the fraction part of the number is percent LF. And it's going to be fraction. Now, how do we actually get those values of sign, whole and fraction? Well, I'm gonna call a function. Okay, and it's going to be, it's gonna, their example is called split, so it's gonna be split. We think it's slightly different than how they did it. Very slightly different. Uh I'm, what I'm gonna do is essentially I'm gonna have no standard output. It's gonna be a void function and all the outputs of the function are gonna be uh pointer. Technically, you could have one of the outputs to be a standard output of the function. But when I have pointer outputs, I find it a little easier to just have them all as pointer outputs. Instead of one being a normal output and the rest being pointer outputs cuz then you get confused about what should, it's like an added level of confusion, I think. So I think what I'm gonna do is just all three of those outputs are gonna be pointer outputs. And the split function, which is what's gonna split our number into the different parts, is gonna be a void function. So well, there's four things I need to send in. Four things. So what's the first thing? Well, I need to send input in. I need to send the address of sign, the address of whole and the address of fraction. Because remember, put semicolon there. Input is the number that the the user input. Sign is the uh the address of sign, I mean, is what's gonna tell us the sign of the number. And so since I want the function to be able to edit these three variables, I need to send these three addresses in. Okay, that's it for the main function. Main function is done. Now we just gotta define this function here. Any questions? If I'm going too fast, tell me.
No, that's perfect. It's perfect.
Going fast, I'm going a little fast, it's kind of on purpose, so but if I'm going too.
Wait, and uh percent C, this is gonna be a letter, it can be also be like a plus sign or a negative sign, correct?
I I didn't know that until right now, but yes, it can also be a plus sign or minus sign. I guess that makes sense. It's a character. Why wouldn't it?
It has all the things on the ASCII table.
Yeah. There you go. Okay, so I'm gonna define a void function called split. It's gonna have a few arguments. So the first argument is gonna be double. Oops, was it you there? Double. Uh I'll go call it F input. Doesn't look right. Okay, I'll, you know, I'll call it F input, sure. So it's the function input. It's not the same input variable as here, but it's the F input. Okay, and then I'm gonna call this uh address of sign. And I should be clear, it's a character pointer, address of sign. And I'm gonna have a integer pointer, which is gonna be called address of whole. And then I'm gonna have a double pointer. Which is going to be the address of fraction. Okay, so these are the variables that the function is getting get. It's not gonna have a return statement because I'm, it's a void function. It's returning void. So it doesn't have anything there. So it has the actual input from the user and the three addresses that I'm now gonna be able to edit. Okay, so how you deal with this? Let's start, let's deal first of all with the sign, right? So if I, uh that's not too difficult. I mean, if I just do okay, it's a weird, weird way they did that, but that's fine. So first I'm gonna deal with the sign. Is there a question?
I'll take a, I just gonna do like if it's bigger than zero, then it's like whatever plus and it's small, it's minus, minus.
Yeah. So first to deal with uh determining the sign of the input. Well, I'm just gonna say, okay, um if the uh F input is greater than zero, then sign equals, and it's a character, so it's plus like that. Right? Else, well, it's actually else if F yeah, F input is less than zero. Then sign equals minus. And finally, we have an actual else. And here it's sign equals blank because what are the options? If sign is, you know, if is the input greater than zero, okay, then it's give it a plus. If it's, if it's F input is less than zero, then it's negative. But what if it is zero? Well, then it has no sign.
Oh, is zero has no sign?
Yeah, it's not positive or negative.
It wasn't zero like positive?
I think, I think you're thinking zero is even, but it's not positive.
I thought zero was like positive, but the more you know, the more you learn.
I think, I thi- I'm pretty sure the. I think, I thi- I'm pretty sure the definition of positive is greater than zero. So, yeah.
Yeah, zero point zero one is positive, but zero is not.
Um, so, yeah, so there we go, so now we've dealt with the sign, and I should be clear, actually, sorry. Sign is this, that's true, but that would work if this was in the main function. So we have a problem here, cuz if I run this, the void, the the void function here has no idea what the variable sign is, right, has no idea. So what I actually have to do. Is I have to say what, what is the variable address of sign pointing to? That is gonna have a value of plus. Similarly, pointing to. Okay, so that's why I can't just use sign there, because this function has no idea what the variable sign is, sign is in the main function. So all this function knows is the address of some variable address sign. Someone's got their mic on. You have your mic on, I, there you go, okay, good, thank you.
Can I suggest how to do the whole one and the fraction one?
Yeah, we're gonna do that now, we're gonna do the 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 whole part and the fraction part now.
I wanted to suggest how I think we should do it. Add, so we take the F input and we subtract add whole, like no, we take take and input as a double. We, we create an integer that's also F input, so chops off all the digits and that's gonna be the whole. It just chop.
Just say. Well, you're, are you, are you saying like say int temp um equals F input?
Yeah, so it like chops off all the.
I think that won't work, let's just try it, I think that just won't work, because uh this is an integer and this is a double, so it'll just say, it's just so you can't assign. Let's just try it though, but yeah, let's let's give it a try, so it's uh study hall, this is um.
The idea is right, just to cast it into a integer, but I don't, but that's not the.
Oh, but what, what if we just say, yeah, what if we actually typecast it into an integer?
Kinked it and that should work.
Um, oh, I didn't, oh, it just unused, it did, it did compile though. Interesting, so I think that actually might have worked, let's just see, if I say printf.
And since it rounds down, we ju- we don't have to worry about it like rounding up anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, just chop off whatever the thing is, cuz it's like point whatever and it just chops off everything.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna try it, I'm gonna say uh percent D uh temp and let's run it. Execute, I'll say five point forty-five. And yeah, it did actually work, ignore all this stuff, cuz this doesn't, I didn't, we didn't finish this yet, but yeah, it does actually, it does print the five. So yeah, that that worked, good job everyone, yeah, that's that's uh.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
I was gonna do a different, I was gonna do it how they did it here, but I think this makes more sense, we're gonna take the, we're gonna assign a new variable, which is going to be um. I'll call it, I'll still call it temp, it's just like a temporary variable, it's gonna hold the integer typecasted version of our F input, and that always rounds down. If you have a double and you're typecasting it to integer, it'll always round down, so yeah, that's very good, and now I'm just going to say. Well, you know what, actually, we don't even need to do this, we, I can just say that. That the address of add, address of whole.
Yeah, at all.
I think this would work.
Yeah, it should.
In this, in the uh function that I sent, they did it, they made an absolute value sign.
Yes.
Like, why? I don't, wh- why would that, I don't, why would that?
Oh, no, that would matter, because, because if I were to say negative five point forty-five, I would get negative five as the whole part. But I'm already accounting for the sign.
Oh, you're already counting for the sign, okay.
We do actually want the absolute value of this. Absolute value of this.
You have to, do you have to import the math library for this or no?
Uh, let's.
I think so. Some of them are built in. Yeah, we do.
Just math dot H, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, math dot H.
Okay, good, so yeah, so there we go, we determined the whole part and I assigned it to this pointer variable, this address. So whatever this address was holding, now it's holding the absolute value of the integer typecasted F input. So yeah, okay, determining the um.
The fraction?
Fraction, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking out for the fraction.
Okay, tell me.
So just take F input and then subtract F uh the whole.
Yes, that is, that is how you would do it, right, yeah, so if we wanna get the fraction part, the address of fraction is not fraction. Is now gonna hold this variable, and what it is, is it's going to take. Well.
F input might.
So yeah, F input would almost work, minus uh what the address of whole is holding. The thing is, is again, well, let's try it, so it'll compile and it will work. So let's just try, you know, five point forty-five, yeah, it worked, look, everything we have here, positive five, zero point forty-five, that's. But if I input negative five point forty-five.
So they got, you have it or something?
Look at, see right here, negative ten point forty-five, that's not the answer. So what we have to do again is we have to make an absolute value of this. Uh, so if I just do the absolute value function, let's give it a try. Oh, it did work, I was expecting it to not work, cuz I thought I'd use F abs, okay, let's see, five point forty-five, oh. So five point forty-five didn't work, now, the problem is, is that I think we have to use a different function F abs, and I forget what the difference is. But I think you just always use the other one. So uh five point forty-five, yeah, so we get that, and now compile, oops, I mean execute again.
Why did you know how to use F abs?
How did I know to use this one?
Yeah, like how did you know what's F, like, like I don't know, like.
I think just always use F abs, I think that's like, it it's with this, and I think it just works differently, I think it works for negative ever. Negative doubles better or something like that, I forget exactly what the difference was, but I'd say.
I'm pretty sure it's float absolute value.
Yeah, that makes sense, so, there you go, and now our function is done, everything's done, we determined the sign part, the whole part and the fraction part. And then in the main function, those variables were all edited, and notice, the actual function has no outputs, has no standard outputs. I should say, so like.
Cuz it's not my outputs.
Right, cuz it's a void function, so there's no output there, there's only the pointer. And let's see what happens if I put zero in, just to check, so yeah, the sign is nothing, zero, fraction point zero, good, that's what we wanted. Okay, and there's the second example of fractions, fractions, no, functions with multiple outputs.
So technically, you never need a function with a return, technically could only use voids, always.
Yeah, you could, for sure.
But it's, it becomes very inefficient to do that sometimes.
Yeah, I was gonna ask. Is it because we're, you're passing by a reference, you don't have to use a return statement, or why exactly don't you have to use a return statement?
I, I could have, I could have, if I made this, let's say if I made this a, well, I wanted to return like the character. Right, that's what the actual example has, is it, it, the actual function is a character, it returns a character and it'll return this one here, right? But I just decided that I want all my outputs to be pointer outputs. And so I would made it a void function, and I doesn't, since, since I made it a void function, there's no return. Void functions don't return anything.
Okay.
Uh, could you go over calling the function again, just one more time?
Yeah. So here, calling the function. First thing to notice is it's not equal to anything, right, because there's no outputs from the function, so it's not equal to, nothing's being assigned. The output of this, cuz again, there's no outputs, okay, what am I putting into the function, well, I have to put in the value that the user inputted, which was input. And then I have to give the address, the three addresses of the three variables I want this function to be able to change. I want this function to be able to change the sign variable, the whole variable and the fraction variable. Right, because then I'd afterwards, I'm gonna pr- print what these things were changed to. So I sent those in, and then in my declaration up here, while I have double F input, which is the double that's coming in, I have a character pointer. Which is what, which makes sense, because what I'm putting in is the address of a character variable. Character sign, and then the integer pointer and a double pointer, and I edit those in here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, um, I was, so like first you need to um, like when you're calling it, you usually use the address. Like whereas like when you kinda make the function, you use like the content kind of like star.
Yeah, yeah, because what this is saying is the function's expecting an address, it's expecting an address here, right, that means I. The second, third and fourth input of the function is an address, so when I'm putting it in, it has to be an address, and this makes it an address, this is saying address of sign. Address of whole, address of fraction, this is saying expect an address, expect an address, expect an address.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I checked, also I just checked, like you know, C. And yeah, as um, someone here said, F abs is for float and abs is for um. Integers and it's the exact same thing, just one for float and one for uh, one for integers, that's literally the only difference.
Okay, yeah, then good to know, yeah, just, this is for integers, so we bring it, you know, we use abs here and we use F abs here because F input is a.
Do you think it uh, do you think use F abs for doubles too probably, right, cuz it's the same thing?
You mean F abs for integers or?
Well, like if you have F abs, you'd use that for doubles too.
That's what we're saying, this is, this is a double.
Oh, yeah, well, for the doubles, the same thing, it's just like one of them, it's more like.
Float and double, float and double, yeah, pretty much same, yeah. So yeah. Um, okay, so then that is everything then for functions with multiple outputs, hopefully that made sense, any last questions about functions with multiple outputs? If not, I will open a new file and we're gonna start talking about arrays. Okay.
Wait, are we gonna do recursion?
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I forgot about that, um. I don't really know what to even explain about recursion, I mean, I guess I could go through the, um, I guess I could go through the.
The best recursion example in my opinion is just trying to make the Fibonacci sequence, cuz it's like. Of literally a recursive sequence, so.
Yeah, that's true, let me see here quickly. Okay, sure, we can try a recursion one. Just gonna look, just looking through the lecture slides, just to see if there's. So I was thinking factorial, but yeah, we can, Fibonacci is better than we can do that for sure, yeah, that is a good.
It's more, it uses more recursion than I think factorial.
Yeah, I agree, that's good, okay, so yeah, we're gonna use, we're gonna, this example here is gonna be for, uh, it's gonna be example of. A recursive function or for function call, um, example. Uh, specifically, the fib sequence, I'm not gonna try to spell Fibonacci. Um, so, quick definition of the Fibonacci sequence is that the, um, well, let's just like start it, so one. One, no, one, one, two, three, five, eight, uh, thirteen. If I can cor- add the, add correctly, yes, thirteen, twenty-one, and so on, so you add the last two digits into it. So in general, what that means is that the nth Fibonacci number is the Fibonacci number before it. Plus the Fibonacci number two places before it. Right, that's what it's kinda saying here. So hopefully, most of us have probably seen the Fibonacci sequence before, so that's what it looks like. So to make this a, um. Uh, to to be able to, so I guess the 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 idea is we wanna be able to. Have a function that will return to us the nth Fibonacci number. Right, so, let's say here, uh, I'm gonna say. Uh, you know, I'll just say input, int input equals five, let's just say. So this is like the num- the the nth, this is the N we want of which Fibonacci number, so we want the fifth Fibonacci number, so we're gonna call. The function, so our answer, answer is gonna be an integer, so integer answer. So our answer is going to be. Well, I'm gonna define a function called Fibonacci. And I'm going to give it our input. I think that's all we need. And then just print answer. This is the first time I'm doing this exact problem, so let's see how it goes, um, so, yeah, I might need some. So printf, this is gonna be the um, percent D. Um, uh, fib number is percent D, which is percent D. So, um, input, answer. And I guess I'll. But. You know what, just to not be lazy, I will uh, I'll make it a scanf just so that we can try different variables without having to compile all the time. So I'll just say uh printf. Input the N. Line, scanf. Percent D. Uh, address of input, and I'll just put a new line here, okay. So now this function asks for what N, so the nth Fibonacci number is the idea, right? And it's gonna return to us what the nth Fibonacci number is, now, I need to define some function, first of all, it's a function that's gonna return an integer. It's called fib. Right, it's called fib, and it takes in an integer, which I'm gonna call, I'll call input, I'll call F input. The input, input inside the function. Right, and it's going to return, I'll call it result. It's gonna be an integer, I'm gonna declare a result here, now, how do we determine what result is? Well, I said that the nth Fibonacci number was N minus one, so sorry, the 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 one, two before it, plus the one, one before it. So the next, the next number here would be thirteen plus twenty-one. Until, right, until N equals. For N greater than two, I'm pretty sure is what that is, let's just make sure, N greater than one? One minus two is negative one, that doesn't make sense.
It's N greater than two.
Just a suggestion, uh, to keep it more organized, I would suggest, you know, using an array for this.
Uh, how?
Like uh, that that stays within the function. I personally, that's the way I would do it, but um.
You only get one answer from a Fibonacci sequence.
Right, and then you can just just print out and um, F input minus one, uh, as the index for the array.
Oh, so you mean like make, make an array that has all the Fibonacci numbers up to the input and then just print the last one?
Yeah.
Um, that.
Would that work?
I think that might work, but I think, right now, I think I'll try it like this, maybe we'll try that after, and we'll see how that goes, but yeah, I'll try that, so fib. Recursion, in study hall, save that, okay, so it compiles, everything's good. So we might end up doing that actually, but let's, let's just see, so what, okay, so this doesn't go forever, we can't just keep going back and back and back. We have to stop when our result is less than. So our result is, is two, right, because if our result is two, then we have the zeroth Fibonacci number. And the first Fibonacci number here, if N is two, right, it's the zeroth one, the zeroth Fibonacci number is one, the first one is one, first, you have to start with one and one. Right, cuz if I were to start with, if I were to start with just, you know, zeros, zeros would go forever, until we had a one. And when you put a one in, then you have another one and then it goes from there. So, I have to say if. I'm kinda just guessing right now how to do this, so let's see if it works, this is just, just trying to try it out, so if. F input in, input is greater than two. Then I just wanna call the function. Yeah, hold on, how are we gonna deal with this after, okay, well, I just wanna call the function again essentially, if it's greater than two, then I wanna say, um.
Uh, you might wanna use a variable result, like to carry your, your answer forward.
How?
Like you would do, the result is, um, you know, uh. The, it's the result, if it's greater than two, the result is the, the N minus one uh Fibonacci and the N minus two Fibonacci added together.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do right here, right, that is what I'm, what I'm writing right now, and then I'll just do uh, I'll do F input minus one. F inputs an integer, yeah. F input minus two. This is what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good, so yeah, and. Uh, else. So we're not, let's say we're not greater than two, let's say our N is that. Then.
Your result would be one, right?
Okay, that makes sense, yep, result would be one.
What's, uh, the second Fibonacci number is one, right, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, the second one is, yeah, the second one is, it's one and one, that should be it, I think. Uh, didn't like it, I missed a semicolon. Okay. So, let's say I wanna find the one, two, three, four, fifth one, so the fifth one should be a five, yeah, I got a five. Let's say fifth one, six, seven, eighth, eighth one should be a twenty-one. So eighth one should be twenty-one, yeah, good, so the, well, the eight Fibonacci, so, whatever, I'm not gonna fix the English, but that's okay. So there we go, we have our recursive definition of the Fibonacci sequence here defined as a function. And that is that, now I'm gonna comment the code here quickly, I'm gonna go over and just comment everything so that you can understand if everyone's having trouble, but yeah, ask any questions if you have any question.
How does it work, like, I'm being confused on how it works, like, cause once you need a loop to like do it, like, why do you just have an if statement?
So it, it's kind of looping, it's kind of looping, because look, every time the function's called, it's gonna call itself again, it's calling itself again. So you can kind of imagine that within each of these bubbles, there's two bubbles here, this whole function is called one more time, right, this whole function is called one more time. And then within those bubbles, it's called one more, it's called, sorry, two more times, right, it's called two, so this function calls itself two times. And then each of those bubbles call itself two more times, and those bubbles keep going down in like a chain until. Your input, the input to the function, cause you see here, the input keeps going down by one and two. Until that input is, is less than two, in which case your result is one. And then you keep going back up, up and up and up, so the, the functions keep returning themselves, whatever value they had, which is just gonna be, which is just gonna be. This value in the chain, plus this value in the chain, going up and up and up, until we get back to exactly where we started right here. And we re- return our actual result to the main function.
If you remember from class, uh, they mentioned that when you do recursive, uh, functions, your computer uses a stack. Which is a fan, like, you can think of it sort of similar to dynamic allocation, maybe slightly, but, um, it's a stack. So basically, if you think of it stacking each answer, it's building a pyramid from your, the answer you want, going all the way back up to the base case, which for us is one. And then once it knows the base case, it knows how to solve all the other equations. But, if you have a recursive function that's written poorly, you can overflow your stack, and there's a website called Stack Overflow.
There you go.
It keeps going down, but then if it hits like one, that will not result become one? And you're returning one?
Yeah, it'll return one, and then it'll add it to the result before, so imagine both of these functions eventually end up with result of one. So then you add that, you add that together here, and it becomes two, and that function returns result of two. So now, in another instance of this function, one of these is returning a two, and one of them is returning a one, that adds together to become a three. And then the result is three, that returns to another instance of the function, and one of the results is three, and, uh, two, yeah, three and two.
Yeah.
Becomes five, and that keeps going until we get back up to our value that we started with here.
Yes. So you keep sending result back and you keep overwriting result, and then the last thing that you have. It's gonna be the thing of the Fibonacci, the result.
Yeah, if they mention what that's, if they mention what that's called, it, the met, that algorithm is called first in, last out.
First in, last out, yeah.
It's the last, the last term, so the term you're looking for, is the last thing you get, the first term is what it finds.
Yeah, exactly, the first, the first thing you pass into the function, that result is gonna be the last result you get from the algorithm.
But, but isn't it a little like a normal loop, more space and time efficient?
No, uh, stack, stacking is more efficient than looping. It's takes, it stacks, stacks in your memory are, are faster than, like. Array memory.
Is it slower? I thought recursive functions are slower than loop, but.
I think that's why we use the recursive formulas, or recursive, not formulas, but recursive functions, because they provide some sort of benefit.
Yeah, it makes, it makes no difference to us, we're not gonna use.
It makes no difference to us, yeah.
recursive, like, it's not gonna make a speed difference for us, but if you're doing something big, it can have an effect.
Okay, let me just quickly, cause finish commenting this so people can see, so we declared the in, we declared the variables that we're gonna use, that's pretty simple, you know, prompt. For input, uh, and then we're gonna just call, call the function and. Print the result, nothing happening, nothing really interesting happening here, now, in the function, okay, so I declare. Declare a result, result variable. Okay, and this is where the actual recursion happens, right, so, we're just gonna check if the function call. If the, if the, uh, function argument is greater than two. Because if it's not, then we wanna return one, even if you just think about, don't even think about recursion, if I just asked what's the first or second, uh, Fibonacci number, it should give me one. Right, otherwise, I have to say that it's, it's exactly what we set up here, it's the last Fibonacci number, plus the Fibonacci number, two numbers. Behind it, right, and if those ones, if those ones have an index, right, if those, so the index is like which one we're talking about. So if those ones have an index less than two, right, those ones have an index less than two, or, or sorry, two or two, one or two. Then, we wanna just assign them to one, right, it should be one plus one, if this was, if this was, you know, two that we got here, it should be, well, if it was three, I mean, it should be just one plus one. Otherwise, if their index isn't one or two, we wanna call the Fibonacci function again, and that's what it's gonna do, it's gonna do that, it's gonna ask, it's gonna say if. These things, right, if the index of this is less than two, sorry, greater than two, call the function again, otherwise, just assign them to one. And exactly what we need. So, yeah, I don't really know how to comment that, but that's the, that's the idea. Of, of this stuff.
That is recursion.
That is recursion, yeah. Okay, so, any questions, yeah?
I think it would be more, much clearer if you were to like explain it with like a specific number.
Yeah, sure, okay, let's do, let's run through an example here, I'll write it, I'll write it out here, quickly. So, yeah, let me take a screenshot of the code here. Okay, so, if I send into the function. So. Yeah, if I'm gonna call into the function, let's say I'm gonna look for the fifth Fibonacci sequen- fif- fifth number, right, so it should be five is our answer, right, so if I'm calling, uh, fib. Fib of five, okay, this is what's gonna happen, five is gonna go into the function, right, it's gonna check, it's gonna check is. Uh, the input greater than two, right, it is, so it's not gonna run, return this result, so then, the result of this, the result of this. Is going to be fib. Fib of, uh, four, plus fib of three. Right, but I'm calling for the four and fib of three, so now, this is gonna ask a new question, what's the result here? What is that, well, the result is four greater than two, yep, so the result, wait, I'm spelling result wrong, result, result. Can't spell when I'm on camera for some reason, I swear I can spell otherwise, but not when I'm on camera, um, so.
Together, you're an engineer, it's okay.
Yeah, so. The result here, well, it's going to be fib, fib of three, plus. Yeah, fib of three, plus fib of two. Right? Okay, well, and then this one over here, I should be clear, is going to be fib of two, plus fib of one. Okay, but now we gotta check, check here first of all, fib of two and fib of one, by definition, they're not great, when, two and one are not greater than two. So, their result is one, right, the result here is one, result here is one, so those add together now, those add together now to two. Right, and so this result here is two. Okay, so, they add together two, and they only go back one more step, now here, well, this result is going to be fib. Fib of two, plus fib. Of one, for this, right, so this is gonna have this result, and fib of two is one. These results are both one, so now, we're gonna go back, these add together to become two. This adds together to become three, so the result here is three, and added together, we get five. Which is what fib of five is. So does this make sense, I think this is a good, good way to describe it.
I get it. That makes a lot more sense, I was confused on how, uh, the computer knew what the, uh, the Fibonacci sequence of like. The second or third instance is, I was a little bit confused about that, but now I get it, so thank you.
It's magic.
Yeah, just think of a pyramid, you're slowly working your way, either up or down, depending on, like, what your recursion is, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Eventually you get to a base case, and then you can just go all the way back up.
I didn't know that it went backwards, but yeah, I know it makes a lot sense, no.
Yeah, and like, result one just basically means that like the most basic step is just wants to come, just spreads off of ones.
That's a very important, yeah, it's a very important part here, is that your recursive formula has to have a base case, it has to stop at some point. For us, it stops when we either have Fibonacci of two or Fibonacci of one, that result is just one, it doesn't call itself anymore at that point, right? Important to note, it's not calling itself here, if it did, it would go forever, right, you would never stop calling itself, and you wouldn't get a, you wouldn't get a useful answer. So, you have to have a base case where the sequence stops, or the, the recur- recursion stops. And so for our case, that was Fibonacci of two or Fibonacci of one, that's the base case. Okay. Any questions? Any questions? Um, so then, that's it for recursion, and that's it for functions with multiple outputs, we're gonna now move on to arrays. As one dimensional arrays, strings, two dimensional arrays, dynamic allocation, um, all that kinda stuff, so, let's start with that. Uh, unless anybody has any last questions about this stuff before I move on. Okay, so. Probably good to do it with an example problem, honestly. Okay, so, let's just start with like basics of like arrays and stuff like that, so. Array is the general name for, you know, ordering of items in some form of a list or something like that. Um, so an array is, I guess I'll, I don't know what, is a. A ordering of variables, or ordering of data with the same type. Okay, so what does that mean, well, in a one dimensional array, is exactly what a list is, a list of, um, numbers. Uh, characters, doubles, well, that's a number, that's a number, so. Doesn't really change there, but yeah, a one dimensional array is just list of, just a list, a two dimensional array is a matrix. Right, we know matrix, we know matrices, so, yeah, that's, that's that, and we don't really talk about three D arrays, but they keep going, you can keep higher dimensional arrays. So, they're useful if you have a bunch of data that you wanna collect about. Someone or something, like if you have like the, you know, the, the temperature across a bunch of days, you wanna put them all into one list, well, that's an array, so. How do you define an array? To define an array, well, you just say the type that that array is gonna hold, now, the array can only hold one type of data, it can hold a bunch of pieces of that data. So it's like a variable that can hold a bunch of numbers, but it has to be the same type, so let's say I'm gonna make an integer array, call it R. And the, the syntax we use is square brackets, and here you put in, uh. So, we're gonna forget about dynamic allocation just for a second, and this is just gonna be, let's say, I know exactly how many, uh, values this array should have, it should have. Um, well, it should have, it'll have a length of five, that's what I'll say, it'll have a length of five, right? So have five characters, so, the important thing is that, okay, I can assign right away here, what's gonna be inside. This, um, thing, and I realize. That I missed something in my notes. I think that's wrong, what I typed in my notes here, it's good that I'm seeing it now, and I'll fix it after, just wanna look at the lecture notes for the exact right thing, yeah, okay, I see what's wrong. So, this array can hold five things, so let's put five things in here, you put squiggly brackets like that, so five, four, six, seven, it's integers, right, and. Uh, I don't know, well, I want a different number, one, so it can hold five things. So. This is, we've, we've declared it, if I want to access, for example, uh, you know, one, just, just one of the entries here. I'm going to use, uh, this syntax, I'm gonna say printf. Right, printf, value is. Percent D, and what's gonna be there, what's gonna be array at value, well, okay, let's say, let's. This one right here, I'm gonna try to access this three, I wanna print this three, what index is that, what value in the list, what position does it have? Well, it actually has position one, right, cause you start counting at zero, so zero, one, so we want an array of one, and hopefully, that will just print. Array example. Example one, if I could spell, again, that would be very nice. Uh, and we should just get a three, value is three. So there you go, that's the basics of using arrays like this. So, again, an important number is that, uh, I mean, important piece of information is that. Is you start counting at zero, so I'm trying to access the second thing in the list, which has an index of one. Um, okay, that's that, let's see how you fill an array, so I can declare an array like this. I can declare an array like this, right, into array five. But it, and it has nothing in it, it just has five spots, listed zero through four, right, index zero through four, it has five spots, so to fill it. Well, I could do something like, uh, you know, I could do a bunch of scanf, I guess, so I could say four.
I have a question?
Yeah.
Uh, do, do those have a value of zero, do they have a value of null?
Print it, let's see what happens. So I'm gonna print this, R one is uninitializing this function, so.
No?
I, well, is this compilation finished actually, so let's just see what happens, like, just zero, so, zero, I guess.
Good question.
Yeah.
When you have an array of five, you can only have four elements in it, because the last slot is the forward slash zero, right?
Oh, that's for strings, that's for strings, for an array, for an array, you can have, you have, I have five, but for strings, yes, you're right. You have one less, but we're gonna get to strings. Okay, so if I wanna fill this array, well, I'm gonna do a for loop, so for int i equals zero. I is less than five, right, so we don't wanna, we don't, we don't want our index to be five, because nothing exists at array of. So if I were to say, well, we'll do it in a second, but, array of five, it doesn't exist, right, there's nothing at that position. Cause there's only index zero through four, which is five positions, zero, one, two, three, four, right? Uh, but we, there's nothing that exists at index of five in the array. So, uh, I plus plus. And then we can just say like scanf. Percent D, and what am I gonna assign, it's gonna be array of I. Not U, I. And there we go, and then I can just print, you know, I can say, also, I can do another, I can do another for loop, um, for. Int I equals, I don't think I have to say, I'll just say I equals zero, I already declared I up there, you know, I'll say, I'll say. Into J equals zero. J is less than five, so always it'd be less than the length, in fact, you can even just. You can call, I guess, okay, well, we'll see in a second, actually, I'm not gonna talk about that just yet, about using variables there, but yeah. Um, so then I'm just gonna do printf. I'll say entry percent D is percent D, it's gonna be J. Array of J. And I just gotta put a couple of new lines here. And that's fine. Can I, I don't think I put a new line there, okay, compilation failed. Uh, that's supposed to be a J. And it's good, okay, so, input the N, uh, that doesn't make sense, compilation finished, oh, I clicked the wrong thing, didn't I? Compile, yeah, so somehow I, I almost clicked this, I didn't notice it, okay, compile, still didn't work, uh, J. Something's wrong here. Uh, address. Okay, there we go. Execute, so it doesn't prompt me, but I'm gonna put in a bunch of numbers, so, four, six, seven, three, two, and entry zero is four, six, seven, three, two. Right? And there is no entry five, even though this is a length. And there is no entry five, even though this is a length of five, there is no entry five, there's entry zero through four. The reason this is useful. The reason it's good to start counting at zero. Instead of, because it's like, it seems like right now it's just an added confusion, but the reason it's actually useful is because. What's the address of the first element here, right? I can print it, hopefully, let's say, if I say print. Print F, it's gonna be an integer. Percent D and it's going to be the address of the zeroth element in the array. Alright, so I'll do that. So I'll just do a bunch of numbers. It didn't print anything, forty-five is the last one, oh, it failed, sorry, failed to print. I didn't put a semicolon. And I'm also gonna, just gonna quickly say, uh, address of zeroth element. Right, is that? Uh, still didn't like it, nope, it did like it. Does that work? Am I gonna have trouble here? Uh, okay, well, it, it printed it a bunch of times, I realized I didn't have to put it in the, in the loop here, so. But you see, the address of the zero, zeroth element is that, now let's take a look at what the address of the first element is. So of the first element. Second element. Third element and.
Why don't you just change the zero inside the loop for a J?
Yeah. That would have been better, but I'm already here, so. I, I should have thought of that before, but thank you. I'll do this, there, okay, oh, I should have removed that too, okay, zeroth element has that address. Oh, oh yeah, okay, that makes sense. Then each of the elements, each of the, the next element is four spaces above, right, four spaces above. And the reason it's exactly four is, we'll talk about that when we, well, we'll talk about that very soon, actually. Uh, it's just that the integer variable takes four spaces of memory, that's all it is. So in other words, the size of an integer is four, it's how many bytes it takes, or how many, how many spot, address slots it takes. So, but the idea is, is that they're exactly next to each other, right? Since an integer is four slots, it's not that they're missing a few in between there, it's that integer takes four slots. So they're exactly next to each other, the zeroth element is zero places away from the address of the array. So the address of the array is the address of the zeroth element.
Wait, is that um for bits or is that for bytes? Does anyone know?
I don't know.
Or an integer?
Bits, I think. I don't know.
Cause in a bit, there's eight bytes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't actually know. Does anybody else know?
For what, sorry?
What, these, these address elements, it's like, oh, sorry, so size of an integer is four, is that four bits or four bytes?
An address is two bytes, I believe, in G, yeah, an address is two bytes. Um, like in terms of its, how many, how many uh bits it uses to store the. So.
So.
It says four bytes, two or four bytes, an integer can be, it's bytes, not bits.
Okay, it's bytes, okay, there you go, so yeah. So the, the idea I just wanna say here is that, you know, the, the address of the array is the address of the zeroth element. So the zeroth element is zero places away from the address of the array. The first element is one place away, so place doesn't mean one number, cause again, the places can, in this case, the place has a value of four. But the first element is one size of the elements away from the address of the array. The third one is three of those places away, the fourth one is four of those places away, if we started counting at one, we would have added confusion there. So starting counting at zero, it makes a little more sense here when you start thinking about the addresses of the values inside. Okay, any questions about what I just said here? Quickly just also print. I'll say printf. Note that. Uh, percent D, I'll say, size of. Can I do brackets like that? I always forget, it doesn't like brackets, size, size of. Come on, int is. Percent D, size of. So I have to build. Doesn't matter, and I lost it, I clicked too fast. No, it wasn't a boss for me, okay, I'll be slowed down a little tiny bit. So size of int is four, right, the size of an integer is four, so that's why it's four places each time here. Okay. Now, I think, let's talk about. Let's talk about. Sending arrays into functions, I guess we can do that. Yeah, we can do that, and then we'll talk about dynamic allocation, yeah, okay, let's do that now. So any questions about the start of, you know, one dimensional arrays? So now we're gonna talk about sending arrays into functions. Okay, so that's, that's what the goal of this example here is gonna be, uh, the goal here is sending arrays into. That's not the goal of the topic, but whatever. Um, okay. So. Let's say I have this array and I'm gonna, I'm just gonna explicitly define what it is, I'm gonna say, uh, it's gonna be integer array, but arrays can be anything. Okay, I'll do a double array this time for no, no particular reason, so the double array. Is gonna have a size of five, again, five entries, doesn't have to be five, but. Four this time. And I'll just put a bunch of doubles, so zero point thirty-four, now one point forty-five, three point ninety-six. And the last one, one point oh two. Okay, so we have a bunch of doubles stored here. What we wanna see now. Sometimes you just need water, not tea, okay, um, so our. Array here is a double array, it holds four values. I wanna send this into a function, okay, and I want the function to tell me something, I wanted to tell me how many of these numbers are greater than two. Okay, it's gonna return, so I'm gonna call the function, it's gonna have a result, so I'm gonna say result equals, uh, I'm gonna say, it's gonna be a count function. And I wanna say printf, it's gonna say, uh, there are percent D. Values greater than two. I'll say greater than one, I guess, cause then I'll get more. And uh, result is. Okay, so we have a function that's gonna return to us the number of values that are greater than two. So. Let's define the function here, it's gonna have a integer result, it's gonna be an integer. It's called count. And it's going to return. I'll call a new variable count. And count is an integer. You know, it's gonna be a little, little too confusing to say int count, int count, so I'm gonna say int uh, um, number. And I'll say number here too. Int number, int number, let me open the window quickly, it's a little bit hot in here. Hopefully, there's no sound of cars, that's gonna be disturbing. Okay, so. I have this function that's taking in, well, we don't know what's taking in yet, but we know that it's going to return us a number. And that number is, is gonna check all the values in this array and, you know, add to the count if the value is greater than. Greater than, yeah, greater than two, okay. What is it gonna take in? There's two things it has to take in. It has to take the address of the zeroth element of the array and the size of the array, those are the two things that a function has to take. When it's dealing with an array. So address of the zeroth element, that's just going to be a pointer to um, address. Address, and it's going to be an int size. Those are the two things it's taking in. And then now in count. We're gonna take, so what am I, what am I sending it? I'm gonna send it the address of the array, so it's gonna be the address of the array. Which is the same thing as the address of the zeroth element, always remember that, right, the zeroth element is zero places away from the address of the array. And I also need to send it the size, well, the size is just four. So now this function has the array and it knows its length. The reason you can't just send it the array is because you could send it, uh, just sending it the address of the zeroth element, right? Is because sure, it knows that, but you can't figure out just from that how many elements it has in it. Right? Try to think about that for a second, how would you do that if you just found an array? How would you know that the next element is not part of that array? Right, the element after that. So like, like, if you have like, we know this element, this array has four values in it. But in the memory, maybe there's another double right after. How would the function know that that double right after is not part of the array? So that's what we're trying to deal with here. That's what we're trying to deal with here. And so. Yeah.
Yeah, uh, don't you like ignore the ampersand because uh, the array itself is a pointer?
You mean, yeah, don't put this here?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that's a redundancy, but you can do it, it doesn't change the code.
It doesn't change the code, okay. I guess I've just been doing that, but maybe you don't have to do that yet. Just trying to look at the. Yeah, you're right, you're right, you don't need to, uh, you don't need to put that there, but let's, let's leave it just for now, just to emphasize that it's an address we're sending in. Uh, if the code works the same, then the code works the same. So, okay, I'm going to save this, it's gonna be array example two. Study hall. So. Yeah, I want, so now this function now has access to the, to the array, right? At this address, so for. Yeah, for. In uh, for loop, I'm gonna go through the list, through the address, uh, array is what I'm trying to say. Int I equals zero, I less than size. Right, I less than size, could put four there manually, but let's just say we don't know. I less than size. And. So then I'm also going to take in, that's it, no, no, sorry, and then I'm sorry, I plus plus, and I realized these have to be a semicolon here. Okay. Now, I'm going to check if. If. What do I put? If. Hold on, yeah, I made a mistake here. This is not what's supposed to be up there. This has to have that. And that pointer might not have to be there? We have to say that this is an array, so we've gotta put this at the end here. Um, I thought this pointer had to be there. Okay, let's do it without it, but if we have a problem, then, okay, that's what's supposed to be up here, it's, it's taking in an array and specifically it's the address of the zeroth element here. So then if. The address of the array that we're looking at of I, I. Is uh, greater than two. Then uh, number. Plus plus. And I just gotta say that this equals zero. That, otherwise do nothing. And this should work. Compilation failed. Um, this has to be results, did I spell that right? R is here, let's see. Semi-colon, I forgot somewhere.
Result was defined, you didn't create a result.
After the double, there is no semicolon, after the double.
Oh, yeah, thank you. And int, okay, so we're having trouble with the sending in the array into the function, so let's see what the error that it's giving us. Passing argument one of count from incompatible pointer type, so expects a pointer to a double. So let me see.
Then you have to get rid of the ampersand because. Yeah, you sent the address of the array, but in the function itself, it's the actual array you're using.
Um, I was gonna ask the issue, you sent in a integer array, but you were actually looking for a double array.
Oh, yeah, you're right, this is a double. Where's the double? Okay, there it worked, and let's see if it works with the ampersands still. No, it doesn't like the ampersand, okay, so I'll get rid of the ampersand, so we're just gonna send. R is the zeroth element, is the address of the zeroth element. Just saying the name of the array is the address of the zeroth element. So we're gonna send that into here, and now this acts as something that holds the address of the zeroth element. And now I can say there are one, well, whatever, this doesn't work, again, English is the tricky part, but. Um, so yeah, so there, there's one value greater than zero, greater than two, I mean, and that's true, there's only three point ninety-six. So our function is functional. So in general now, it's good to, I always like to hear things in general, that's one of the reasons I didn't like the slides from this course is because everything was done with examples, so I wanted to think. In general, so in general, if you wanna send a random function into, sorry, a random array into a function. You need to send it the address of the zeroth element, which is just the name of the array, and the size of the array. And then you need to, um, in the actual function call, you need to declare that you wanna take in an array. So I guess I could have called that. Called it address, cause I thought I was putting in an address, but I, I am putting in an address, it's just that that address is directly linked to an array, so I just say. A D D R as a uh, array, and now I can use that as the array inside the function, and it's the same array. As up here, except it's a copy of it, I'm quite certain, it doesn't, if I were to edit, let's, let's try it out. Let's see, if I, if I said here, before I returned it, if I say A D D R of the second element. So it's gonna be zero, one, two, that is equal to uh, five point oh, let's just say that. And then over here, I printed. Print F. The. Um, the uh, third element. Is, so address of, sorry, uh, index of two. Third element. Is percent L F. Array of two. And let's see what happens here. Oh, it did add it, it did add it, okay, I thought that would not work, but it did work, why did that work? Okay. I don't know why I thought that wouldn't work, I thought it was a copy that it sent in. And it wasn't the same, it wasn't the actual function. I think maybe you can set it up to be a copy. Anybody got an idea with that? I, I thought it was a copy.
I think it's, is uh, I think it's the same thing as the fake results because the uh, array acts as a pointer.
Quite possibly, yeah. Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Sorry, you thought it, well, what did you think was a copy?
I just, I just thought that this wouldn't work, saying address, so like the function, the array. The second index, setting it to five in the function would not affect it here, I thought this would still return to me three point ninety-six here. Because I thought what the function got was a copy of the array, not the actual array, but. Saying that out loud doesn't make sense, so. Uh, I think, yeah.
I don't remember, did we go over a way to pass arrays by value? I thought there was, I thought that was like a, not something you could do very easily. I thought you could only do it by reference.
Maybe I'm, I guess, I guess I'm just forgetting, I guess I'm just making.
Alright, quick Google search.
Yeah. Don't really know exactly why I thought that, but yeah. Yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense, I don't, I don't know, what, what, what happened here made sense, I don't know why.
You cannot pass an array by value and see. You can only pass it by reference, so you can only change the app, like the main copy.
Yeah. I guess technically you could make another copy in the main file and then send that, but that's not exactly what we're saying, that we're, we're saying like. Different, yeah. Like, there is like. Just trying to think how you do that.
I'm assuming that's because arrays store their rate in sequential order in the address. Like book, it's, it's all stored one after another, so there would be no way to like. Send all those addresses at once.
Yeah, o- other than like literally manually doing that, like for each, like if you had like the size of, you knew like the size of the array.
Wait, wait, so when you um, like send in the array into the function, you're sending in the address of the array?
Yeah, I'm sending in the address of the zeroth element, which is the address of the array.
Okay, and then you did. Uh, address two, like index two equals to five.
I should be clear, I should be clear here, this is, this, this is. F array. Is what, what it should be here, and I'll fix that here, F. And uh, that's all, and then here, I'm just gonna set that to F. Array, it's the functions version of the array, it's the same array, but. Array is the functions version of the array, it's the same array, but it's just the functions version of the array. So if I were to set that now, it's gonna do the same thing. So in the.
It still changes the array in the main function.
It does, yeah, because this is the same array, F array in the function is the same thing as array in the main function. They're the same thing, because I gave it the address. I gave the function.
Unlike normal variables, you can have pointers that point to the same address. They don't have that limitation. Wait, say that again? Uh, two different pointers can point to the same address, and by changing the pointer, you change the the value in that address. On but no matter which pointer you use. All point to the same address. It's still, it's still valid.
So R of two is the same thing as F R of two. And if I were to make, send it into a different function, it had a different name, and I set that to two, I I I I you know specified index of two, then it would also change it as it wants.
I got it. So uh where in this code does it, do we ensure that the array? Or sorry, what's it called? The the address of the arrays are being shared, that they're the same one?
Here, as I send it into the array, so count, the first argument I put is R. So that's the name of the array without any brackets, so it's literally the address of the zero with element. And then in here, it's just saying expect, expect an array.
So when you, when you say address, you mean zero point three four?
No, no, that's the value stored at the zero with ad- uh at the at the zero with element. But the the address is just some spot in the memory. I can print that here, I can say um.
And that's what you're trying to transfer over.
Exactly, just like when we did functions as a multiple outputs, I had to transfer over an address.
If it helps you at all, you can think of an array as a fancy pointer. Because. It's not far off from being a pointer. It's sort of like, it's a, it it'll, it can hold, it puts values. Into addresses that are right beside each other, and then it just knows what each address is, so it's it's works kind of like a pointer. But it's its own thing still.
And it keeps it sequential, keeps it sequential.
That makes a lot more sense to me than. That, what I was thinking before.
Right, so yeah, so the address of the array is something completely different than what's held at that. Okay, any questions now about the sending functions, I keep saying sending functions, sending arrays into functions?
So if you like feed line thirty one and. At like before you call the function, like in like line twenty five, it would print three point nine six and then. Later would print five, like if you.
Three point nine six and then later five. That's exactly right, because it's the function that's making the change. So before the function was called, the third element is still three point ninety six. Does that make sense?
I I have one more thing to say if people still want a little bit help with arrays. The reason, the brackets that you you so you name your array something, and you usually put brackets. At the end to s- to say what what cell you're going to, like either how many cells you have or what cell you're gonna access. That's the same as doing a point, so let's say I wanted to do it on a rated in a different way. I could have a pointer. So I'd have a pointer named array, and then I would say, okay, at the address of. Of like, I'll just, you know, let's give it a random address. Let's say it's one, I said it's sorted a re- address one thousand. Okay, that's my. Address of my zero with self. And then if I do ampersand A R R plus one, so I'm going, I'm going one one address over, and I set that to a new. Value, like I set that address to a new value for my array, and I do plus two, plus two, plus four. So what all I'm saying with the 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 brackets that you use for a array is sort of the same thing as saying, okay. The the value at the address of array plus whatever the number in the brackets is.
That's right, yeah.
If that helps you at all, because the reason A R R by itself is an address is because that's how the compiler sort of reads. An array when you write it. It reads the address A R R, and then it just adds. What plus whatever's in the square brackets, and then it takes the value stored at that address.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That might be a little. I couldn't explain that very well.
Hopefully, if there's someone that was a little confused, that's that's a good way to think about it for sure, yeah. It's just a little insight.
So when we have that value of that array, so or sorry, that address, so which is like a long number which we had. Uh, so when we have that in as a result equals count bracket A R R and then four. So when we take that address, which was A R R, and we take it back to the original function, or our count function, so if it's if I'm thinking just scroll up. So you just see, so that that huge address is being subbed into double F A R R. So wouldn't that, so is that is that address being subbed into the those air brackets?
It's it's essentially saying that F A R R is an array, saying expect an array, and the address of that array is what we sent in. Is this right here. And remember, the addresses are shared between the function and the main and the main function, right? There it's the same address, the same, you know. There's not like two versions of the same address on your computer, it's it's one address. So if this array has the address of A R R. It is the same array as A R R. And so any edits I make or checks to it will make the, we'll we'll edit. This array here. Check the same values.
Okay, and this ensures that zero point three four is gonna be the first value.
Yeah, index index of zero first element, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then. Any more questions about this? Okay, then let's talk about dynamic allocation of one dimensional array, so dynamic, let's say. Topic, topic. Dynamic. Allocation of comma. Sometimes I can type, sometimes I cannot type. So. In this last example here, I knew from the beginning that this array was gonna have four items in it. But what if, for example, I want the user to input, uh you know, any number of values, right? How would I deal with that? So to deal with that. You might be tempted to say, well, just say, you know, scanf, how many values do you want in the array, assign that to input and say. Uh int array uh size, uh and that's it, and we declared an array with some variable size. That doesn't work. Um, why doesn't that work? I guess I don't, I realize I don't actually have an answer as to why that doesn't work. Um, does anybody know why that does exactly doesn't work? I know it doesn't work, I know you can't do that, so there's there's different ways to do it. Um, but it's illegal in N C C to do the following, do you know why? It's impossible to have an arrays of varying sizes because that makes programming inefficient. C is very strict with arrays, but is also most efficient of all high level languages. Okay, so um, not a very good answer, but.
I think, um, I think is, I tried it with one of the last when I didn't know like this dynamic allocation. Um, I tried it and like it didn't work for me uh when I put the array inside the inside like a function or something.
I see, yeah.
In the size, it's kind of like inefficient.
Yeah, it just doesn't, it just doesn't work like that, so we're gonna have to do it a different way. So. What we do. So let's say I have an array, okay, well, I'm gonna. Okay, I, the idea is that I want to have some array with size size. That's the idea. I wanna effectively do this code right here, how we're expecting to do it. So what you actually have to do is you have to do a few steps. First, you have to get the size from the user, so I'm gonna say int size, so let's say scanf, well, first I'll say printf. Please input the size of the array. Line, and then we're gonna scanf. And I'm gonna get a percent D from it, and it's going to be put into size. Okay, now that I have this. This is what I have to do. I have to declare a, let's say it's a double array, so I'm gonna just follow the example here, so double array. I need a pointer that points to what we're gonna talk about, array. Okay, so this is, or I guess I'll be, I'll just call it R. And I have to do, I have to use a new function here, and I'm gonna now say that, okay, so we have a variable, a pointer variable R. Which is going to be the zero with element of our array. So what I have to ask now is how many extra spaces do I need? Because right now it's an array of size. Size one or index of zero, it just has one element there, because whatever is at that double pointer. But I wanna have size number of spaces after this size value. So what I'm gonna say is that R equals, the value there is, okay, now this is, I'll I'll write the code first and then. Hopefully be able to explain it after, so double pointer, typecasting it to so calloc. Size, size of. And there we go. So this code here, and I didn't, I don't explain it yet, but this code here does what we expect this line of code to do. I guess I should say. I guess it's it's not really that, because it doesn't count the size there, but there, this line of, these two lines of code do what this, we're expecting this to do right here. Okay, so what's happening? I have the address, I have some variable R that holds the address of the zero with element, and then what I'm saying is that. Ignore this double for now, is that I wanna allocate, that's what C alloc is, allocate. How many spaces of what size? So I'm gonna write that out fully here. I want to allocate. Uh, N spaces. Of size double. Which so. Allocate is like give the space in the memory, how many spaces is the size, the input, the size of the array, and size of double. This is a function that's gonna return to us, it's just gonna tell us how many um. Spaces a double needs, how many spaces a double needs in memory, and let's just print it out here quickly. So I'm just gonna say quickly. Note that uh the size of a double is percent D, it's an integer amount. And it will be size of. So if I compile this, our um dynamic allocation one D array. Okay, didn't like it, let's see what's happening. I think I have to use a library that I didn't use yet or something. Nope, that's not it, uh whatever.
I'm pretty sure there is a library that he's supposed to use.
Oh, it says compilation finished successfully. Oh, it's just I didn't use the array, yeah. Input the size of the array five, note that the size of double is eight, yeah. So what I'm, what that means, yeah, eight bytes, so what that means is that if I were to look at. Like in this example over here. The difference is. The steps in the. Addresses was four, because the size of an integer is four, but the size of a double is eight, eight bytes. Right? So that's what I want to, that's what I want. Like that's what I want each space in this array to be, and I'm typecasting it to be a double pointer, because each of those spaces is gonna point to a double. That's the idea, each of those spaces is gonna point to a double. So we have size of them. Each one has a size of eight, that's what this is saying. I could just type eight here, that would work just as well, but just to keep it general, so you can, if you're doing a different variable, you'd put a different number here. Um, and so size of double is eight, so each of those slots are gonna have eight spaces, eight bytes in the memory. And what are each of those slots gonna hold? It's gonna hold a pointer to a double. And all that is under the name array. That's what the zero with element holds, the zero with element is pointing to this whole thing right here. And so now after this, I can use this array as I would expect, as you'd expect, okay, go ahead.
Um, you know the the casting that you did in the starting, the double pointer? Where R is equal to double pointer? Um, that, wh- what would that, what would the C alloc return if you didn't have that? Like what type would it return if you didn't have that double?
If I just didn't, oh yeah, if I just had this. Like I'm sorry, if I just removed this. Um, let me think for a second. I don't really know what that would return, I don't even know how to.
Okay, but it all, uh but 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 what I'm trying to say is that it. You, it only makes sense to use C alloc when you have that double pointer, right?
Yeah, yeah, you need to, you need to typecast it.
That makes sense, because it it probably returns something other than a double pointer.
I don't, can't even think of what it would return, but. You're typecasting it to a double. And so now, we have a dynamically allocated one D array. Dynamically allocated means that like. We didn't specify at the beginning of the function how much space this function needs, it's dynamic, so it's it reacts to the user's input. Okay, any questions?
Um, what would we need to do if it was um malloc instead of calloc?
Like. I think malloc. malloc, I think you don't need to specify the size, I've never once used malloc, so I don't, I don't know.
I think you do uh size and an asterisk and then uh size of double instead of the combo.
So it was, oh, yeah, and you just. Oh, I see, okay, okay, you just, so it's essentially, yeah, let's try that actually, ma- malloc, so calloc. Needs two arguments, the the number of spaces, how big each space is. malloc, you just said was size times this? Is that what you said? Right? Because it's just taking in how many actual spaces it needs, right? Actual bytes it needs. So it needs size times double bytes, and since it's being typecasted to a double pointer, it knows how to specify each.
Which one sets their values to all zero? Is that malloc or calloc? I forgot.
Uh, yeah, I don't remember.
I think it's calloc, I think it's calloc.
Um, a look of views on what the difference between malloc and calloc is, can you just go over that?
Think about it as memory allocation versus, um, it's a weird word for it for C al- uh C alloc, but C alloc is more of um. Uh, I'll explain, I'll explain it at first, malloc is memory allocation. So you needed the exact amount of bytes that the memory needs to take for that array to be fully represented in the memory. C alloc, on the other hand, needs the size of the array and the size of of each individual uh index of the array. If that makes sense. malloc is byte per byte what you need, right? Whereas uh C alloc is um. The first you specify, yeah, first you specify indexes, second one you specify how many bytes are in that index.
Okay. So the, so the malloc doesn't need the indexes of the.
And that is the entire number of bytes that it will take to represent the entire array in memory.
Thank you.
C alloc stands for, I believe, continuous allocation. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure why, because M malloc makes more sense, but I don't know. I honestly don't know, because my professor ru- um had a like entirely one slide on the um erase section for it, so. I don't really, I didn't.
Okay, well, it's two o'clock, guys, so that's gonna be everything for today for this, so tomorrow, we're gonna go over um dynamic, well, two D arrays. Uh, the two ways to do dynamic allocation of two D arrays, we're gonna go over structures, we're gonna go over. Uh linked lists and the command prompt stuff at the end, although the command prompt stuff at the end is very short, I don't even know how they would test us on that. Well, I guess maybe one thing, but it's very short. And yeah, that's that's about it. So that's everything for today, that's all our content we're gonna go through today. I'm here for a little bit longer if anybody has any questions.
Wait, can we also go over like arrays within arrays?
Arrays within arrays would be two D arrays, that would be.
I don't know, like, um, I I think uh it's it's different, because uh in one of the uh powerpoints. Um, there was something called like sign, uh computer scientists method, and then there was like a computer software engineers method, but like I was pretty confused about that.
That's two D arrays, those are two D arrays. That's that's like dynamically allocated two D arrays, yeah.
The software engineering method is is it's a method of storing data. In like, because it's all sorted in addresses, it's a method of storing the data, is like a linear uh. Array that where each, I, you know what, just don't even worry, don't even worry about it. They said that you're gonna be using computer scientist method. It's, it's a little bit more complicated to do the software engineer one.
I prefer the software engineer one, because every, I haven't heard one person agree with me, I just think it makes more sense to me than the computer scientist one, but I can do both of them, so I'll, we'll go through that tomorrow. So those are din- dynamically allocated two D arrays.
So the software engineer method is is more similar to using linked lists than it is to an array.
So the software engineer method is, is more similar to using linked lists than it is to an array in some sense, cause that's sort of what you do.
Yeah. And yeah, and we're also gonna go through strings. That's actually the, the, the next topic is strings, then two D arrays, then, um, so we're gonna. Quite a bit to do next, next time, so hopefully we'll get it. But I think this went pretty well. It took us a little longer than expected.
Tomorrow, right?
Yeah, noon tomorrow, noon tomorrow. And definitely done before three. I definitely wanna, like, latest two thirty we'll go tomorrow, cause I need a little bit of a break before the.
Yeah, alright. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
We, we also have, um, uh, five, we have the physics, you have the physics, right? Are you doing physics for?
Today at five, is that what I said? Let's see, I'm gonna look at tutor announcements, I wanna see what I said. Um, yeah, today at five, I'm doing.
Uh. For physics, I think Duplik posted while, during this, uh, meeting, uh, like the final. How many questions on what topics? That was all posted recently.
Okay, good to know. So we will, yeah, we'll do that at five o'clock today. We'll look, we'll look through. We're gonna do the practice problems from the textbook, but. And also, we're gonna take more breaks, cause it's a, it's like, uh, P C S ones are long sessions, so I didn't take a break this time. But, uh, cause it was only two hours long, but we'll definitely take a break, two breaks during the physics one.
Also, guys, don't forget to practice, um, bit conversion, cause that is, they have to test us on that, I believe.
That's true.
And that'll be on the C P S.
Maybe if we have time, we'll go through that as well. I don't know if we'll have time. Okay, so I'm just here for a little bit longer. Any more questions people have? Otherwise.
Yeah, could you, uh, I have a question. Could you explain a little bit more about the double, uh, double pointer in, in front of the array?
Right here?
Uh. Yes, no, the, the, the other one.
Well, let me switch this, let me switch this back to calloc. So, we have this many number of spaces in the memory, each of those of size double. What each of those things has to hold a double, right? It has to hold a double. So, in a sense, the address of each of these things is gonna point to a double. Does that make sense?
But is that gonna be stored in there as a double? It's gonna be a pointer to a double?
It's gonna be a pointer to a double, yeah.
And if it is gonna be a pointer, where is pointing to?
It's, it, well, it's pointing to whatever is held at that address, whatever is held at the address. So we've specified, we've allocated this many addresses, each with a size double, so they can hold a double. And they're each gonna point to a double. And we assign the double, just like we would here. I'd say, whatever, I'd say, R.
Um.
R.
Yeah.
R of two, or it's a four, two is five. And then now, the, what that's pointing to is five.
Okay, so two ha- like, two has to be. Two, they're in there already, two the numbers inside the brackets, it's gonna be a double two?
This is why I said arrays are similar to pointers, is for the, the dynamic allocation part.
Right, so, yeah, so the two is just the index here. Five point six is what's being, what, what the address. What's being stored at the address we've specified for the second.
Okay, okay, yeah, I think I got it. Yeah, yeah. So what you're doing is just, like, you have an array. Like a regular array, and then it is pointing to another place. And then it takes the number from that place or replaces the number from that place, but that place is located in calloc size, size of double, double.
Yeah, that, this is like how many spaces we're giving, so this is giving all the spaces, right? This is giving all the spaces, right? And yeah, that's, that's the idea, though, yeah.
Right. So, so it's, eh, uh, remember, matrices are very similar to pointers. So we have a pointer, and we're going to have it point to a matrix, but we have to, we have to clear space in our memory. For the matrix, like, we have to make sure there's nothing important in the spaces that we're gonna use. So we say, okay, let's allocate this amount of, of space, this amount of memory. It's gonna be sequential, so it'll be right beside each other. Uh, and then let's make sure that we point the first cell of this set of data, this, this string of addresses. Let's make sure our pointer points to that address. And then when we use those square brackets, we're saying, okay, what is the value at the address of the first cell? Plus the number inside the square brackets. And that's why we can dynamically allocate them.
Two places further down.
With a, with a pointer, instead of just writing out array. I mean, writing out, wr- writing out double A R R with square brackets and a size. Is the same as making a pointer. It's just, this is doing it where, where you can do it like, uh, dynamically.
Specify the amount of spaces it's gonna have, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think that's more understandable. Yeah, thank you.
Wait, speaking of sequences, right? Um, in this case, since it's a double, um, type, uh, array, right? Um, the address of each element in the array is eight bits apart, eight bytes apart, right?
Yes.
So if it were, if it was like, uh, an integer, it would be four bytes apart, and if it was a character, then it would be one byte.
Eh, I don't know about one. Would it be one? I think it'd be, let's just see what size of.
Pretty sure it's one.
Character is size of, character, let's just compile it. Size of character is one, yes, there you go. Size of character is one.
So if there's, if there's, uh, so then it's, uh, the size of the, the char would be one, then, um, how many elements there are? It's going to be one times that in the calloc, right? So if, if there were like fifty characters, it would be fifty bytes apart.
The distance between, the, the, the distance between like the zeroth element and the fiftieth element, in the memory. Yeah, then it'd be fifty. It's, it's sequential. So if there's fifty elements and they're all value of one, then they're fifty bytes, fifty addresses apart.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, any more questions?
I, I have a, a couple more questions.
Sure, sure.
Um, so I was wondering if, um, well, first, I think with the. Um, like, the example, the second array example you did. Um. I think I. I, I asked about, like, if you know, print test, um, before calling the function, and then, like, I just cut out right after that. So I didn't, I didn't hear what, what was said.
Oh, okay, you, so, yeah, is, are you asking that, like, you're asking what happens here? Yeah, I'll run it and I'll see what, see what happens. Well, yeah, so it, it prints before the function's called, the a- array value at index two is three point ninety-six. Right, at index two. And then after the function's called, that's when the edit happens in the function. So when I print it after, it's five.
Uh, yeah, okay. Um, and also, um, I was wondering. How, so you did, I think. I'm, I'm confused now. Um, I basically said like, so what about an array? Where like, you did an example where a user can input numbers into an array, um, and you had like a couple scanf statements?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. And, um, but what if, cause here the size of the array was already declared? Um, but what if like, so it was like this example kind of combined with the last example? Where you didn't know the size of the array, would you still have to use the dynamic allocations for this? Or because like, say you use like a Sentinel control loop, where a user just inputs an amount of numbers until. Like, something, till like something, and then it would know like the size, or?
I know what you mean, I know what you mean. Sentinel control loop does make sense. So you're saying like, let the user keep inputting numbers and let I go up. It's just that when I declare this, the index has a maximum of four. Index of five doesn't exist. So even if I try to input something into index of five of int array, or index of six, index of seven, there's just nothing there. It's not part of the array. So the index goes from zero to four. If I were to try to do anything here, if I say, um, array of, let's just say six or sixty-seven, I guess, there you go. Um, equals five, let's just say I was doing that, then, well, it finishes, but I don't think it does anything. It compiles. I don't think it does anything. There's nothing there at that value. So if I do this, 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 yeah. It, it, it does what we're saying, but this doesn't have any meaning, like it doesn't do anything, cause the sixty-seventh index doesn't exist. So even if I had a loop that kept going, uh, there's just nothing there.
Also, be careful doing that.
Size.
Go for it, what'd you say?
And like if the, the size of the array, like, wasn't declared at first.
Then you wouldn't have an array, oh, like, you mean, you mean just like leave it like blank like this?
But like have, I don't, yeah, I guess, I think that would work.
So I, I tried to compile this, compilation failed. You need to specify the size, or alternatively, you don't have to specify the size, but you have to put in some numbers here. And now, now this is valid too, right? I can compile this. But because it has a specified size. So you see, whenever you're declaring an array, you have to specify the size, except if you use the dynamic allocation method, and then you don't have to, you don't have to specify the size.
Okay, um, and then, uh, there was one like, uh, for the Fibonacci sequence example you did. Um, I was just wondering, cause when you explain it was an example, where you did like, um. Where you did like, explain the result, like pathways.
Here?
I was wondering if you could, yeah, like that exactly, um, cause that made sense. I was wondering if you could do the factorial. Like, explain it in that same way, the like, with the recursion, um, with like a factorial example, yeah.
Sure. So if we're looking for, so in general, uh, an important thing to note is that N factorial is N times N minus one. factorial, right? Until, until N minus one equals zero, sorry, N minus one. Equals zero, in which case zero factorial is just one. Right, so this is, this is in a sense, this is our recursive formula, and this is our base case, N minus one equals zero. So, we're gonna kee- we're gonna start here. So let's say I'm looking for, uh, I'll say, I'll say factorial, factorial of five. Let's say we're looking for a five factorial. So what that is, is that's going to be. Five times fact, um, factorial of four, right? Which is gonna be five times four times factorial. Factorial of three, right? This should be an equal, I mean, an arrow, which is gonna be. Five times four times, because remember, cause it's N times N minus one factorial. So you can kind of think of this as, just quickly to, to write this here. This is like saying that factorial of N is equal to N times factorial of N minus one. So that's what I'm doing. N factorial is five, five factorial is five times factorial of four, which is five times this is four times factorial of three. Right? Which is then three times factorial of two, which is then five times four times three times two. Times factorial, fact, eh, factorial of one, which is then five. Times four times three times two times one, times factorial of zero. And I don't go further here. I don't say factorial of negative one, I just say this is one. So this ends up just being five times four times three times two times one times one. And then that's factorial. I guess these could be equals.
Okay, yeah, and then in the, in the if statement, uh, would you put, um, or. You put while N minus one does not equal zero, or was?
Is greater than zero. I'd say if, if F input is greater than zero. Cause otherwise it is zero, and then you want to say the result is, and if somehow this became negative one, then you just wanna say the result is. I guess if they input a negative number, it would mess it up. But assuming they're not gonna input a negative number, then you just say F, F input is greater than zero. Because that's when you wanna, uh, that, that's when you wanna activate this next recursive part. Otherwise, you just wanna say equals one. You just wanna say result equals one.
Okay, okay. Um, and then I also just had for, for tomorrow, um, I was wondering if, um. If it was possible, or if you had examples that were similar to the format of the. No, I cut out.
Of the, uh, well, I hear you now. I he- you, I heard you say I cut out.
Oh, okay. Um, if you could do like, with the format of the midterm where they had like code. And then they cut out a line, and then they said like, which, which line would make the value equal to like some number? I was wondering if like you had examples of those, or maybe if you, like, could do like kind of similar examples of those, like for tomorrow?
I don't have examples right now, but I'll try to find them. I'll, I'll try to find them. I'll look online and see if I can find them. Or if anybody else can bring examples, that would be good. So yeah, I'll try to, I'll try to do that for tomorrow.
And that's all, thank you.
Okay, great, no problem. Okay, any last questions?
Uh, not a last question, but, uh, as a word of warning, um, Adam did this, where he set like, you set array sixty-seven equals to something. Uh, always be careful doing that, because you, you are changing an address in your memory, and if, if it's something important. Uh, something wrong can ha- like something bad can happen, just, just be careful with that.
Yeah, that's true. This is just a random piece of memory. I don't know where I did it now. Here, this is just a random piece of my memory, uh, in my computer, so, yes, I, I agree. I don't even think I ran this. Oh no, I did run it, actually, but, but, well.
Nothing bad happened, but.
Nothing bad happened, yeah. But you're right, it is just a random piece of my memory that I'm setting to five, so probably shouldn't do that. Okay, unless there's any last questions? That's everything for today.
Wait, what time is the physics session at?
Five.
Okay.
So we start that at five.
Alright, bye-bye.
Okay, bye.
Have a good afternoon. I'll see you at five o'clock.
Okay, sounds good. See you at five. Bye then. Just here for one more, ten more seconds, if anyone has any more questions, and then that's it for me. I'll upload this right away after. Okay, well, that's it then for me, um, thank you.